Well, good morning. Good to see everyone on this beautiful day. And it is a blessing today to be able to call this regular meeting of the mayor and board of aldermen for the city of Natchez to order. I would like for everyone to please stand for our prayer to be followed by our pledge. And this morning, we are so blessed to have Reverend Tracy Collins. And many of you know him for Red's tours. And the Reverend, we thank you for offering our prayers this morning.
Good morning. Blessed is the man that walks not in the counsel of God, nor stands in the way of sinners, nor sits in the seat of the gospel. For his delight is in the law of the Lord. And in his law, as he meditates both day and night, he shall be like a tree planted by the rivers of water that bring forth this root in this season, and his leaf shall not with it. Poor God, we come to you as humble as we know how, but he is bound in his clothes in reverence to you as our Creator and the Sustainer of our very lives. Thank you, Lord God, for this city. Thank you for this leadership. Thank you for all those who work behind the scenes to make the city of Natchez as efficient and effective as it is. Lord, we love you and we appreciate you. We know if it's not your grace and mercy, we wouldn't be able to stand. Just thank you for this meeting today. I thank you that all hearts and minds will be on one accord with God and that we'll be able to work together, Lord God, to manage where all this live, a better community, a better place. We thank you, St. and we pray that in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend. Thank you. Let us now repeat together our pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. We'll ask the clerk to administer the roll call.
Alderwoman Hall?
Here.
Alderman Fraser?
Here.
Alderwoman Smith?
Here.
Alderwoman Irving?
Here.
Alderman Davis?
Here.
Alderman Murray?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I did want to make an announcement. There was a typo in the agenda that went out Friday and by email calling this a special call meeting. This is not a special call meeting. This is our regular 11 o'clock meeting. It has become tradition, however, that now this being the fourth time we've done this, that during the week leading up to Juneteenth, we have these meetings here at NAIPAC. And the Board of Aldermen did vote on that very subject just a couple of weeks ago. So we are honored to be here. And our thanks to Bobby Dennis and to everyone here at NAIPAC for making us welcome today. Thank you so much. Before we have approval of minutes, I would like to suspend the rules with a motion to allow Bobby Dennis just to share a few words on behalf of NAIPAC, being that he and NAIPAC are our hosts this morning. I'd like a motion to allow him to speak. Motion made by Alderman Maroney, seconded by Alderwoman Irving. Discussion. We'll call for the question.
Call.
All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Dennis, if you'd use that microphone, make sure folks online can hear you.
Okay, well, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Board of Aldermen. We're honored, actually, to have an opportunity to share our facility and most importantly, to share the message that we deliver to all the guests here in Natchez. And this helps exemplify Natchez. So we thank you, Mayor. We thank the board for doing this. This is, I consider, one of the most starting points in showing our cooperation, showing how we learn to negotiate and understand each other and making decisions that make this city better, greater, and gives the opportunity for us to show how it develops through our people. So thank y'all again. And we really appreciate your support in us delivering our message to the world.
Thank you, Mr. Dennis. Thank you so much. And I want to say, we are really featuring NAIPAC this week. This is our fourth year in a row to have the Board of Aldermen meeting here, here in June. But also, we will be here again Thursday night for our Kickback at NAIPAC event, our fourth annual. And we will be having wards and having some real inspiration. In fact, a featured speaker will be former Mayor Tony Brunner, talking about his time as mayor during the Civil Rights Movement. So we're looking forward to that at 6:00 PM on Thursday. We also, on Friday, at 12:00 noon, will be here again for our Day of Unity. And that will be our fifth annual celebration of our Day of Unity. Reverend Clifton Marple will be bringing the message. So we invite everyone to come back to NAIPAC and enjoy these events. Also, Mr. Dennis, speaking of history in Natchez, I see someone also who represents history and I always have to welcome him. And I'm so glad to see Walter Brown, who for many years is the city attorney here and respected attorney here in Natchez, former state representative. And so, Mr. Brown, the Honorable, we're glad to see you. With that said, we'll return now to our agenda and we will ask the clerk to please to take us through the approval of minutes.
Okay. So we have two sets of minutes that we are requesting approval. The first set being the regular board meeting held on May 14th, 2024.
So move. Second. Motion made by Alderwoman Irving, seconded by Alderman Davis. Discussion?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
There's some typographical errors there.
I think we did catch those after these were sent out.
Okay. That's the thought.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Other discussion?
Call for the questions.
Question's been called. We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next item.
Next item is the minutes from the regular board meeting held on May 28th, 2024.
So move.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Davis, seconded by Alderwoman Irving. Discussion?
Call for the questions.
Question's been called. We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries. The next item on our agenda is to welcome our visitors. We do have a gentleman here to speak to the board on matters pertaining to appointed committees, historical and preservation. Mr. Lee A. Ford, Senior. Mr. Ford, you're recognized for five minutes and thank you for being with us today.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
First, you are the God, for these God have a life, and he is representative of all who is here. Amen.
Amen.
On the opportunity to tell you about myself, my name is Lee Ford, and I'm a Natchez native. This is my home. In fact, I grew up in this immediate area, just around the corner from the city of Tarry. That being said, I am a Natchez native. I graduated from the Natchez High School. I served in the military long, served long. I'm also an retired police officer, from the city of Natchez. An retired here, also retired from the Forte Pass, which is called Forte. Been in the armed force for probably 40 years now. I'm a great descendant of some Ford boys that have fallen in the Civil War when you were in Natchez. Nation native, I think that my blood and vigor comes from my family. However, with today, I come to you in reference to the situation of these appointed boards. It really concerns me because to the man and to this boy, you don't give anything to me. I think this is a timely occasion because transparency is so important. We live in the community of, this is one of my favorite things, this is my home. I'm a native Natchezian. The transparency is so important. I serve this country and I believe in the possibility to be a public servant. I have been a public servant all of my life. That's what I do. I have provided by this community as a duty for people's safety and to offer. I'm proud of Natchez, and Natchez is my home. But what concerns me now, I have some questions in reference to these committees. Can I pass this, so, one of my questions that I wrote down for the board?
Thank you.
My first question about, and y'all will get it on the radio a lot of times, y'all have it a lot of times, it says, how are the commission members selected? Number one. Number two, what are the qualifications to become the member? Number three, is there a term limits for the commission and their sponsors? Or is it mandatory to be a resident of Natchez to serve the commission or being a native Natchezian to that or to any of that? The next thing will be, what is the reason why there's a minimum of black representation on this commission? Being, Natchez being 62.24% black, 0.77% white, and 102% racist, 3.6%. My question is, I'm a homeowner, taxation or reputation. I feel that the committee should reflect the community. Now, blacks be more than 50%. These committees will not represent people of color in Natchez. And getting a military man on my life, getting a reporter, this is all kind of a question. It must be fact in my opinion, to be able to look at some boards, they have three to six, in some cases, three, every board, this is not fair, and I don't figure, this taxation by reputation, it's impossible for someone, in my opinion, I said it before, that you all should, to be defaced. Now, the skin of justice, she is blind because, there's a skin of it, that's a battle to be admitted, she saw one hand, she blind because she doesn't want to see the color, which of course, or have had not. It shouldn't make it no matter who is far or against, it's all opinion, pretty fact. And I'm not saying I feel some things wrong, it ain't gonna be fair because we are not on, you know, overhaired, just a community, we are not, we're not a representation to get a fair, honest thing, in my opinion. So I'm asking this board to please, this we visit this year, you may give it back in writing or give it back some figuring out something, on the side of perfect behavior, it needs to be modified because our dollars spent, you know, I live in a nice period, I get high taxes, you know, and I'm just saying, we need to represent it in fact. It wasn't really, it's not real, it's not a policy, it's all of the fact. And I'm saying by being a public servant after my life online, I feel, in my opinion, I am one of the bad people to be a part of this because I'm the vice president of the Indian way, Indian way, I am on a democratic committee for this state, in the asset account. So we should want people to be fair, just like, who knows what you know, like, where you come from, what you got, that's all I'm saying this morning. I'm not willing to let me kind, I want to look at this, please, let me know what's going on, I can't get much of this to you, I plead the rap, the board, you know, you have to date, please, this makes sense, to be fair. But I come out of my mind of this country, and I feel I deserve answer, and I, my family has sacrificed themselves, all of them stood up, you know. So for history, election, I do, I go to this community. And right over here now, this is my playground, actually, they'll remember, a phrase they said, I put a rider on the corner, drinking on the street from the city of Tarry, and this is my playground, I will, I will live in this community, I know of my first community and been drilled all of my life by my parents, of all of my family, the force of the Civil War, I've been there. Thank you all for listening to me, I appreciate you, love y'all, I thank you all very much for giving your time.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. You have a, you have a good day and we, we will certainly ask our attorney to take that under advisement. Thank you so much.
Yes, Alderman Fraser? Let me just say this. These questions that Mr. Ford has brought to, brought to us, these are not just his questions, these are some of the questions of being asked by the peoples in the community. I have, I have asked, people have asked me about some of these questions. So I say to, I say to, to the community and to the rest of the board members, these questions will be addressed. And we'll, as a board, I think, we're gonna, we're gonna do the best, we don't, not only do the best, we're gonna do what's right for the city of Natchez. So like I said, these are a lot of questions being asked in the community, not just by him. I have people walk, mean, ask me the same question, but like I say, we, as a city, we gonna take care of this problem.
Thank you, Alderman Fraser. Yes, Alderwoman.
I too want to resonate that. I have had several members walk up, just approach me, approach me with asking, how do you get on those commissions? And who select those commission members? These questions, I want to make a motion that we come with a response to the questions that have been given to us, I say we're taking it under advisement, which means we may approach it within the next two weeks, consider that, but I do want to make a motion that these questions are answered.
Certainly. That is a motion made by Alderwoman Irving. Is there a second?
Yes. Let me, let me say this.
Yes, Alderman.
You have to second the motion or it dies.
Well, that is true, but.
Let me say this.
Alderman Fraser, I'm recognizing you. Yes, sir.
Let me say this to, to council, we, we gonna address this. And I, I don't, to me personally, I really don't think we need a motion, because like I say, it gonna come back up again, if it come back up again, then we'll take action, no action done by this board. So that's just me personally.
Okay.
We will ask the city attorney, as we mentioned, to take this under advisement and report back to us.
I'll do that.
Certainly. Mr. Ford is a taxpaying citizen and does obviously deserve a response.
Will do it.
Thank you so much.
But she still have the motion.
Um, is there a second to the motion?
Is there a second to the motion?
I think the motion died.
I think the motion died because it wasn't answered. So there was no need to even, you know, make that comment.
Thank you. We'll move on now to our next item. Under City Business, I'm very grateful to welcome Bob Busek, who is the chairman of the Mississippi Coding Academy or director of the state Mississippi Coding Academy. And Mr. Busek actually is from Natchez. And he has been working very closely with us and the director of Workforce Development, Tawana Williams, on an exciting project. And I believe he has exciting news for us this morning. And so, Mr. Busek, thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good morning to everyone there in Natchez. I apologize for not being in person. We had a death in our family, my wife had to fly off to California to attend the services of the late Ron Wiggins, who, as you may or may not know, was a big part of Natchez. And so, I was not able to come out and visit with you guys in person today, but I am extremely excited about the opportunity that is in front of us right now. And so, I would like to present a proposal for the establishment of a Mississippi Coding Academy's academy in Natchez, Mississippi. We had some conversations back and forth about this. We are working directly with the Natchez Southern School District on part of this proposal. And I come before you, Mr. Mayor, and our Board of Aldermen and Alderwomen, to seek approval to establish the Natchez, Mississippi, Mississippi Coding Academy's campus location and approval for usage of Delta Regional Authority workforce grant funds that you have in the amount of $75,000 to establish that academy. And if you don't mind, I'd like to elaborate on what the MCA does and go from there. Any questions before we start?
We'll entertain a motion first. If Alderwoman Hall has made that motion, Alderwoman Irving has seconded that motion. Mr. Busek, please continue.
Awesome. As the, as the mayor said, I am a native Natchezian. I call Natchez home. I live in Brandon, but I call Natchez, Natchez, Mississippi, my home. My parents and most of my family still live there and I visit very often. In fact, I was there last week for the awesome workforce development event that you had in Reliant Warriors Bay. I was really excited to see this going on in my home. And I am excited to bring a technological advantage to the local populace of Natchez, Mississippi, and our community. As the executive director of the Mississippi Coding Academy, I'm thrilled to present our proposal on the establishment of an MCA campus in Natchez. Our mission is to bridge the digital divide and empower the underserved populations through technology and education. With a commitment to serving the community, our proposed campus will provide essential coding tech skill training, create new pathways to lucrative careers in the digital economy. We are seeking support from the Magic Board of Aldermen and Alderwomen, including the allocation of $75,000 in the Delta Regional Authority workforce development funds to kickstart this initiative. These funds will be instrumental in setting up our campus, developing the curriculum, and creating skills shelters, and providing pathways into the digital tech skills training needed to provide long-term employment and needed to provide long-term employment inside of Natchez, Mississippi, and beyond, in the local community. Together, we can catalyze positive change, including the people of Natchez, with the skills and opportunities they need to thrive in modern workforce. Our mission is to create a vibrant tech ecosystem in Natchez that fosters innovation, economic growth, and community empowerment. I want to thank you guys for considering this proposal, and having me on with you today. The Mississippi Coding Academy was established in 2017. Its main sole mission is to provide technology and education at no cost to the participants in the underserved communities of Mississippi. Since 2017, we have graduated beyond the number of two-hundred-and-fifty-plus Mississippians and folks from abroad that have gone on, and eighty-five percent of those graduates currently are employed in the tech workspace, seventy percent of those that have graduated identify as African-American and or black, and thirty percent of those identify as Hino, which is unheard of in Texas. So, I am extremely excited about this opportunity. This will be our fifth campus. We currently have our headquarters campus in Jackson, Mississippi, we have a coastal campus in Biloxi, Mississippi, we have a campus in Columbus, Mississippi. This year, 2024, we opened up our Delta Campus in Forestville, Mississippi, and on Thursday, we'll be graduating the first cohort of four K students in artificial intelligence and full stack development, which is one of the programs that I want to bring to Natchez and ours. So, thank you for having me, some questions?
Yes, Alderman Fraser, you're recognized.
Oh, you asking for seventy-five thousand dollars, a grant, a what, this cash, a grant?
Yeah, yes, sir. Alderman Fraser?
The seventy-five dollar, each, uh, city put up seventy-five thousand pieces?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry to break it up when I ask that question, can you give us the motion?
Seventy-five thousand, seventy-five thousand grand, each city will put up seventy-five thousand, another cities?
No, sir, no, sir, no, sir. So, the city of Natchez received a Delta Regional Authority grant for workforce development. The Mississippi Coding Academy has also received a Delta Regional Authority workforce development grant in Forestville. The city of Natchez will be providing seventy-five thousand dollars for the establishment of the MCA academy in Natchez for the first year. After the first year, the Mississippi Coding Academy will eat all the cost for the academy. This is a first-year startup with usage of Delta Regional Authority funds. We, the Mississippi Coding Academy, and the city of Natchez went after round-two funding for Delta Regional Authority funds, but since we were both recipients of round-one funding, we were not able to get a round-two application submission. So, we will be applying for round-three of that same funding to establish the long-term occupancy of our academy in Natchez.
Awesome. Wonderful. And so, I'd want to clarify, so these are grant funds, not funds out of the city's budget, but funds out of the grant that was obtained for our workforce development.
We already have grant.
Yes, we already have the grant, yes, sir. Yes, that was a four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant received last year, this will be a portion.
And he asked for the seventy-five thousand, out, out the grant.
And it does come through our budget, I, I, to clarify, you're correct, Alderman Smith, but it, it is grant funds, and not coming from taxpayer funds here locally.
I'm not saying, check, pick.
That's right, this is grant, these are grant funds. Alderman Hall?
Yes, sir. Mr. Busek, thank you for coming to Natchez, you've come now twice to two workforce development workshops that Ms. Williams has put on. Both of these were open to the public and to the board of Alderman, so I do appreciate your input in this, and Ms. Williams has been wanting this academy for several months, so we glad we're gonna have this, and I'm sure the school system has too, I've heard them verbalize the same thing. And just a reminder, we received this grant last year, I think it was, and Ms. Williams did announce the four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. I'll come back to you, Alderman Fraser, but right now, I need to recognize Alderman Irving.
Thank you. I just want to say, this is how our city move forward. This is actually how we prepare our youth, getting them engaged with the digital world, because this is their learning process at this point in time. This is how they gain the knowledge that they need, this is how they become a part of the different occupations that they can have with technology. It is something that we didn't have when we were their age, so they have the World of Opportunity now, and this is how they engage, and this is a part of their learning process. This is truly a win-win for Natchez, the city of Natchez, and for our Natchez Adams County School District, and I'm elated to hear it, and I just hope we get round-three, so that we can make the longevity of it. And thank you, thank you for allowing me to speak.
Alderman Fraser, I do need to recognize Alderman Maroney, we have to, and then we'll come back around to you, our roles, you know, everyone has a chance to speak first. Alderman Maroney?
Yeah, this sounds like a great program, I'm just curious, the seventy-five thousand dollars, where's the, the money going? Is it paying tuition, is it buying equipment? Where's the academy, is it physically located at Natchez High School? How do kids get, get into this program? I just, I'd like to know what's actually happening, what, what, how does this thing develop, where does it go from here?
Mr. Busek?
Yes, sir, thank you for the question. So, the seventy-five thousand dollars, the majority of that would be to hire a local Natchez native as an instructor, a junior instructor, about fifty thousand dollars of that will go specifically for the salary of a local instructor. We are in talks right now with the Natchez Adams School District of occupying the Sacra Building, that is the intention in August, to occupy spaces in Sacra Building with all the services in park provided by the Natchez Adams School District, so that will be open to the populace of Natchez and the surrounding areas. We are also working with the Natchez Adams School District on creating a curriculum inside the high school to work with the twelfth grade in the upcoming school year, to help speed the process up. So, our program is about six months. It is hands-on, money providing, eight block to five block during the week. It requires a lot of prime effort for folks to come, there's no cost to the participants to participate in the program, and there, that's why we are seeking the funds to be able to establish the academy there. We are a five-year, one-year, three-year nonprofit, we do not receive state funding at this time, we are solely funded by grants and donations. And like I mentioned earlier on, we did receive a Delta Regional Authority grant to open our Forestville campus, we applied for round-two funding to create a Natchez campus, but because both MCA and Natchez had received round-one funding, we were not able to participate in round-two. The rest of the money outside of the salary for the local instructor bar for our curriculum fees and our administrative fees of managing the campus. Any other questions, sir? Hopefully, I was able to answer your question here.
I got one. Are you finished?
Yes.
All right, Alderman Fraser, back to you.
My question is, is, uh, is this just for the public schools?
Is this just for the public schools?
I'm sorry, sir, I'm gonna pick it up a few, few of parts of what you're saying.
This might sound kind of frivolous, is this just for the public school?
No, sir, no, sir, this, this academy is open from eighteen to ninety-nine, we like to say, as long as you breathe oxygen, anyone participate, it is open to everyone in the area. We will be establishing a program directly with the school, but this academy, with the fund used out of the D R A grant, will be open to the public of folks from Natchez, Adams County, Lucas County, anybody, everybody, the Gordo Parish, across the river. Like I said, this will be our fifth campus location in the state of Mississippi, we are located in several other places, and we are open to the public at no cost to the participants.
Okay, one more question. Have you reached out to the county?
The county?
Reached out to the county? The supervisors? Have you reached out to the Adams County supervisor?
Oh, we, we have spoken with a few of the supervisors that have come to the workforce engagement, but I have been working directly with Mayor Dixon and Tawana Williams, the workforce director, for the city, through this program.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. The grant funds also did necessarily flow through the city for workforce development, and as everyone knows, Tawana Williams is now an employee of the city, has been, you know, from day one. Also, Mr. Busek, I want to share with you that we had a great session last week, and actually, Alderman Hall was there, also myself, we also had members of the school board, Ms. Williams, Chandler Russ, and others, and we were very excited to have a discussion with the new superintendent of education, Ms. Zan McDonald-Green. And there is a great collaboration already formed on this between Natchez Workforce Development and the Natchez Adams School District. It was possibly the best meeting we've had as a group, and we are going to follow up very soon with more meetings, so that all of this can be implemented by August. Mr. Busek, I do want to let you know, and let the public know, that the school board has shared with us exciting plans for the Sacra Building to also be used as a, as a center of, of, of the arts, focusing on music, drama, and some other wonderful programs. You may know, or you may not know, that we are one of only four school districts in the state that have a string instruments program, as young as, uh, junior high school there, and even younger, they're, they're playing stringed instruments. So, we're really proud of what the school district's doing. We also have, just recently, some other possible partnerships that have opened, just over the last few days. We can't talk about those publicly, but as Alderman Irving said a moment ago, this is all a win-win for Natchez, and that we can be now the fifth city, only one of five locations in the state to offer this, is truly tremendous. So, thank you, Mr. Busek, these are good times.
Call for the question. It's an honor and a privilege to be an Natchezian and be able to bring this back to the community. I know Mr. Maroney personally, I've known him for a long time, and he's been in and out of technology throughout his workforce career, and he can be one of the people to tell you, this is much needed in the area. In fact, for the lack of technological advancement in Natchez, I have a leave to seek employment. So, I'm extremely excited about the opportunity to come back to Natchez, bring this type of training, and help folks upskill and move forward with technology. Every job today in the workforce is a computer-related job, and these skills are much needed. So, very excited, thank you for having me, and thank you for, for looking at our proposal.
And before we call the question, just one more asterisk to the conversation we're having. We understand that the school district, knowing that they have been so successful in their Natchez early college program, actually, in one of the top high schools in the state of Mississippi, they are now looking and planning by fall to launch a career college program that will provide more job training abilities for their students, so that students won't only have the option of graduating with a high school diploma and an associate's degree at the same time, but they can also, if they choose the career route, they can graduate with a diploma and a certification in a trade. So, these are indeed good times for Natchez, that will be one of the first such academies in our state, and this is good news, and it's really great to share it. And I'm so grateful to the leadership of our school board, and Ms. McDonald-Green, and also the president of our school board, who's been doing so much, Mr. Amos James. We have a really great program going. I will now call for a question. Question's been called, we'll proceed now to a vote, all in favor of the motion indicated by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposing that. The ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Busek, and I do want you to know that I did know Mr. Riches, and he was a gentleman, and we are very sorry for his loss, and our prayers are with your family.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all to the Alderman and Alderwoman, this is an exciting event for Natchez, Mississippi, and I say that as a native of Natchez, I am extremely excited about what is coming, jobs will be coming with this, it is an exciting time, so thank you all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, there were two items suggesting two motions, but it's my understanding, all of this has been accomplished by one motion, so we can now move on to our next item. All right. We have with us Mr. Kevin Myers, who has just been announced as the new executive director for D N A Downtown Natchez Alliance. Mr. Myers has such a great history of service here in our community, going back twenty years, and he also, I'm just gonna have to say this before you, you begin, Mr. Myers has left a very lucrative position to go back into the service of Natchez Downtown, and he, I think, considers it, well, working from home, because he has said that downtown Natchez is his home. Now, he's still gonna have an office, but I'm just saying, this man lives and breathes downtown, and I think, Kevin, you are a perfect fit, and we welcome you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Mr. Ford, and Maroney.
Good morning.
Thank you for having me.
How's that? Thank you all, and, and thank you for the support you've given me the past month I've been in this role, and thank you for the ongoing support of D N A, it's very vital to our downtown. I wanted to give you a brief update this morning on some of the projects D N A's been working on, and highlight the teamwork and unity that's been occurring in our downtown. First off, the depot grant, as you know, three-hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand is coming our way, this is a result of collaboration between the city, Mississippi Main Street, and D N A, along with the ninety-thousand-five-hundred from the city, that's four-hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand-five-hundred dollars that will be used to create a beautiful landscape around our depot that can be enjoyed by not only Natchez residents, but also our visitors. Jim Miller from Mississippi Main Street's keeping me updated on the details of the grant, they're still being worked out with Mississippi Main Street, but in the meantime, I've already met with Walter Tipton and Warren Luther at the convention center, I've talked to Lindsay Gilbert at Visit Natchez, and I'm looking forward to the team that will be created around this project. Next, the traffic study, as you know, the city asked D N A to facilitate a traffic study for downtown. I believe Bart Kerkendall's spoken to most of you, he's the engineer working on the project, but he also needs the teamwork of the community. There's an online interactive map, the link is on the D N A website, citizens can drop a pin on the map, add a comment that records their observations, their concerns for any traffic conditions, parking that they've witnessed around downtown. Next, D N A will be teaming up with property owners and businesses, and this is in the balcony awning and facade grant program. This program, the grants will pay up to seventy-five percent of projects that are selected, and it's important to, to notice the goal of this project. The goal is to increase sidewalk traffic, also increase residency in our historic buildings, and increase investment in our downtown. It's not just about preserving buildings. These other items, the increased traffic, the increased residency, lead to the prosperity and growth of our small businesses downtown. Speaking of small businesses, where do they start? Well, D N A wants to help with that. We are finalizing and getting ready to launch on our website, the How to Open a Business in Downtown guide. This is a step-by-step guide that will provide all the resources and links needed for new entrepreneurs to open a business downtown, but not just downtown, because really, any business, anywhere in the city, this will be a great resource for them to use. Speaking of anywhere in- Speaking of anywhere in the city, so right now, anywhere in the city, you've noticed one of our signature, our signature features, our crape myrtles are coming into bloom. DNA is celebrating the blooms in June and July. At the end of this month, June 29th, at the farmer's market in at Smoots, we will have the Celebrate the Blooms Bash, where we will present the Sally Junkin Ballard Award. These are several awards given out to highlight volunteers who use their time to beautify the city of Natchez. Now, finally, speaking of awards, next week, July 20th in Jackson, Mississippi Main Street will be hosting their annual award ceremony, and DNA is extremely excited and honored to be receiving the award for the best project plan in the state of Mississippi. This award is being accepted by DNA for the Hiram Revel's Plaza Plan. This is a shovel-ready plan design that was created, again, through teamwork, collaboration, unity with the city, Zion Chapel, DNA, and others. It's a perfect example of how teamwork can help us prosper. Not only are we receiving this award, but the mayor and the city was able to use this design to receive $1 million in funding that will help construct the plaza and the U.S. Colored Troops Monument. And we are very, very excited for a future groundbreaking. But as I've been talking about, teamwork and collaboration and unity, you know, we feel like we have to work for these things, but we don't. These are God-given attributes. They're in our DNA. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Myers. Alderwoman Hall?
Thank you, Mr. Myers and DNA. I applaud you for your goals. I do want to remind you that there is a caveat, and will always be with me, anything you do in this store district, or on a landscape, any landscaping that the depot has to go through MDAH.
Yes, ma'am.
And anything you're doing with the awnings on the buildings in the district has to go through preservation.
Yes, yes.
And I do applaud, and congratulations on the award.
Thank you, Alderwoman Hall. Alderman Prazzer?
Yes. The DNA, like I said, we applaud what you're doing downtown and everything, but I just want to say this, it might have been just for a lack of, you forgot, we also, that million dollars, we'd like to thank Congressman Benny Thompson for helping us secure that money. I think, and also, I want to thank the young lady over there to my far left, Mrs. Chelsley Doyle over there, she's been wearing me out. Because she's on her job, and I know that, you know, y'all are going to do great things down there at the plaza, although, matter of fact, not just the plaza, all over town, because Natchez, like I said, as the state heard about a couple people, Natchez is a very historical town. Anywhere that you go in the United States, I ran upon people, they said, I said, I'm from a little old town called Natchez. They said, oh, no, that's a beautiful place, that's a pretty place. I've been there before. So we are not just the oldest settlement on the Mississippi River, we're one of the beautiful settlements on Mississippi.
Well said. Thank you, Alderman Prazzer. Any other discussion? Yeah, great job. Thanks again, Mr. Myers, and all of our DNA partners. We are so grateful. And we do have to recognize the president of the board of DNA, and as you see there so quietly, trying to hide from me, Joanne Brumfield. Joanne. We, yes, we have to thank Congressman Thompson. He initiated that. But I also have to thank, it couldn't have happened without approval by the Senate, and both of our senators helped with that project as well. And also, Michael Guest, no longer our congressman, but on appropriations committee, made sure to hold his Republican comrades, or whatever you want to call them, his cohorts, by the hand and make sure they approved it. So it was a bipartisan effort. But I also want to say this, none of this would have happened without the leadership of Zion Chapel.
That's right.
And Norma West, and of course Pastor Burton Vigil, and the trustees who signed that parcel of land over to the city in a historic celebration and ceremony just two months ago, or three months ago. We have to spread credit everywhere. All right, we're going to now move on to department director reports. Mr. James Johnston?
Good morning. I'll be receipt maybe for my report in a package. I had added to it at the end. Columnbarium Walks and Landscape Project, approval passed but number one. Staff in concert with architect Tom Eves is recommending approval of payment number two, excuse me, totaling $20,345.40 to Gozer LLC.
I'll entertain the motion. Motion made by Alderwoman Hall, seconded by Alderman Davis. Discussion?
Yes.
Yes, Alderwoman Irving.
And it's just, just for clarity, Mr. Johnston, what location, was that the sidewalk that was just repaired here?
Columnbarium at the cemetery. You go to the cemetery, take the first right and follow it to the end, and you'll see where the site prep work is taking place right now.
City Cemetery?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. That's what I'm going to clarify.
Certainly. This is a beautiful project being funded all by donors who have contributed to the project. It will be located in the rear portion of the cemetery, and if you drive by the cemetery, you'll see a beautiful artist's rendering of what this columnarium will look like. It is a great project. Any further discussion? We'll call for the question. The question's been called. We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries. We'll move on to the next item, Mr. Johnston.
Fiscal year 2019 Gulf State Regional Law Enforcement Technical Systems Grant planned under the Department of Justice. Staff in concert with consultant Dr. Stephen Mayberry is requesting the following contract addendums with an effective date of Friday, May 31st, 2024, to amend the contract with East South Technology, originally approved on August 29th to 23, for the installation and configuration of cameras, increasing the value of the contract from $29,890 to $32,750, an increase of $2,860, and again, retroactive to May 31st, 2024.
It's a pleasure of the board.
Second.
Motion made by Alderwoman Smith, and seconded by Alderwoman Hall. Discussion on that motion. I would like to clarify, all of these funds are being paid for by the NOLA grant, and we're, and Department of Justice, and we're right on time. We're so excited we're proceeding. With a, question's been called. We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next item.
To amend the contract with Invisis Research and Analytics, approved 82923, for web design and hosting, increasing the value of the contract from $10,000 to $11,450, an increase of $1,450, and retroactive to May 31st. The reason for the increase is to extend the web hosting for one additional year.
It's a pleasure of the board. So moved. Motion made by Alderman Davis, seconded by Alderman Maroni. Discussion. We'll call for questions. We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries.
Two more items you can see on the view screen. Receiving of quote bids, Humane Shelter, the auxiliary building, quote bids were received on Monday, June 10th, to perform the general renovation specified by Wakecaster Duncan on this facility. A summary of the quote bids received are listed. You see, we did receive two quote bids, base bids, and at alternate, you see the respective totals. The low bid was each can to $46,200. Pleasure of the board.
Motion made by Alderwoman Hall?
Second.
Seconded by Alderwoman Smith. I do want to clarify, we have approved already one quote.
That is correct.
And so we need to divide this out, because we're definitely going to go over, I think, on what we were planning to spend originally, it would appear.
The first bid accepted was for Thorpe, for $23,100, so roughly $73,300 is the cost for all the work.
Yeah. We were, we were, we were made, we were prepared by Johnny Wakecaster that it looked like there would be more work involved. The good news is, we have this within our Community Development Fund. It is actually, you know, available. Yes, we're spending a little more than we intended to, but it will be for a long-range, a long-term solution to a problem we've been having, which is lack of space for animals that are out on our streets and of harm to themselves and to others. Alderwoman Irving?
I was just going to ask, what's the amount now that we're standing? You said we're standing a little bit more.
Right at $73,000.
$73,000, okay.
When you add what we've already approved in this quote. But it's my understanding that this will be the last quote?
Yes, I mean, that's all we need. We had divided into two distinct opportunities, mechanical plumbing and electrical, and then general renovations, yes.
All right, all right. And also, before we call the question, want to make mention, we've had communication with Charlie Speed at the Humane Society. He is still awaiting the agreement, Mr. Attorney. I know you're working on it. So we can proceed and continue with our monthly support that we've always given to the Humane Society. And this is a real step forward in that continuing and even improved relationship. We'll call for the question.
Call.
We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next item.
Downtown Natchez Microsurfacing Improvement Project, City of Natchez Infrastructure Funds. Bids were received until 2:00 PM. Yesterday, Monday, June 10th, no bids were received. In summary, Volker, the city's consulting engineer and staff, myself, Mr. Dollar, anticipated receiving at least one bid based on attendance at the recent pre-bidders meeting, noting only two speed companies primarily perform this type of work, TR Wallace and Vance Brothers. After Volker spoke with contract representatives, the scheduling of this microsurfacing project was not good, noting that any project bid at this time would not be started until late spring to early summer 2025, while we anticipated the work beginning in several weeks and ending this calendar year. Based on conversations with contractors, staff would like to note the board wants to proceed and again advertise in this project in four to six weeks, and changing the timeframe from the proposed work to accommodate anticipated contractors' work schedules for proposed start time of late spring to early summer next year.
I would recommend that we take no action, that we take this under advisement. This does come as some disappointing news. At the same time, however, we do know that we were anticipating improvements this year, but also, in our new budget, possibly more improvements next year. Let us take time to regroup, look at our options, and then we can, we can take action at a later meeting. If that's agreeable to everyone, yeah. Alderwoman Irving?
No, I'm just going to say, we didn't get that, so we could, could we get, could we get a physical copy? Because that's not included here, so that way we'll have more understanding. Okay. All right. Thank you.
I want to ask the citizens to be patient with us. We can't control the contractors that will bid, that will actually do what their schedules are. It is disappointing to find that we really only have two contractors that we know of at this moment that provide this service, but I want to remind everyone, we just completed about 50 streets. That's a big deal. And there was a time, we didn't think we were going to be able to do that, because the original bids came in too high. We got creative, we made it work. We will get creative, we'll make this work, but it is a disappointment, but we will get this done. Alderwoman Smith?
So I know when we first did the paving project, we had to get further out there and go outside the box to find somebody for pricing-wise. Is, is there a way to us get outside the box on this for people to bid on it? Is there any other?
We will try. See, you know, if they are any contractors that have a statement, they're going to plan that first.
So it was their scheduling, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
They are busy this, right now?
We just take others who isn't having, also receiving, and from the same thing. And so, limited number of contractors available, you know, it's a first and a second. And so, they did take, uh, the schedule that they already had, and worked, and were able to do this quite often.
I would like to say this, there are two roads involved here that are in really poor condition, and the more they deteriorate, the less ideal they are as candidates for microsealing. Those two roads being Canal Street and Homochita. And so, I think, Mr. Dollar, we may need to look at a short-term solution of some spot patching, as much as we hate to do that, but that is something that would have to be done anyway, to form a microseal project, to at least make the roads smoother and to preserve them until they can be microsealed. Is that something we could look into? Okay, great, all right. Well, we won't take any action on that one. Anything else on your report? All right. Mr. Johnston, thank you so much. Mr. Dollar, you're now recognized. Mr. Dollar, hold on. I did want to say, Malcolm Ennis, has he stepped out?
Mm-hmm.
Well, we should have had that Juneteenth update, then moved up. I hate that.
He's not gone.
Could you make sure? Thank you, Ms. Levada. If he, if he can stick around, we'll have that announcement. All right, Mr. Dollar, please proceed.
Good morning, Mayor and Board.
Good morning.
Good morning. First thing I want to bring you, I'll bring before you today, is the seeking approval for a contract for inspection services with Gordon Kaiser and Sessions on the Canal Street Bridge repairs.
So moved. Motion made by Alderwoman Hall, the, seconded by Alderwoman Irving. And Alderwoman Irving, I recognize Alderwoman, obviously, sent her award.
It's an award.
We will have now discussion.
I would just need to say.
We'll call for the question. We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you. Next item.
Next item I want to bring before you is, we had, we received bids on June 6th, 10:00 AM, for two EWP projects that we had out. The first one being Gordon Lane EWP project. We had three bidders from Hope Construction, G Rayburn Equipment, and Camo Construction. The low bidder on those, out of those three, were, was Camo Construction, in the amount of $99,776. So I'm here before you today, seeking approval to.
So moved.
Second.
Alderman Davis made the motion, Alderwoman Irving second. Discussion. We'll call for the question. We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries.
Thank you. And just to touch on that point a little bit, the Gordon Lane project.
Can you speak to the mic a little bit?
I said, and to talk to Gordon Lane project, just for a second, if you'll recall, early on when we spoke, this particular project, the city's portion will be paid by energy, and I think the city attorney will bring, bringing that agreement up during his report.
Next, next item?
Next item is, we received bid for Bob Lee Williams EWP project, same date and time, June 6th at 10:00 AM. We received three bids, one from Hope, one from G Rayburn, and one from Camo. Low bid on this particular project was through Camo for $153,826.55.
It's a pleasure of the board. Motion made by Alderwoman Hall?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Maroni. Who was a talent.
It's okay. We just want it done. It's right.
That's right.
It's right. It's right, shit needs to be done.
Discussion.
It's okay.
The question's been called, we'll proceed to a vote, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries.
Good, and I would like to add on this particular project, so both of these projects are lumped under the same NRS, NRCS agreement number. With that, they had an amount attached to two-hundred-eleven thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Once you total these two bids up, comes in at two-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand six hundred and two dollars and fifty-five cents. Therefore, there is a shortage, forty-one thousand eight hundred and fifty-two dollars and fifty-five cents. I have sent all of the bid tabs and information to our district supervisor, and he, as of yesterday, emailed back saying that he was going to start the process requesting for those additional funds to accommodate our low bid. So I just wanted to provide you with that information on this, on these particular projects.
Well, do we need a motion?
No.
I'm so sorry.
No, I don't think there's not, there's not a motion requested. I was just providing that information.
Thank you. All right. Anything else?
Yes, next item I have is that we requesting permission to advertise, you know, Dacey Street EWP project.
It was a pleasure, Board.
So move.
Motion made by Alderman Fraser, seconded by Alderman Irving. Discussion. We'll call for a question. I, I'm excited about this one. It's, it's an area that we've been waiting to do for some time. We'll now proceed to a vote, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. I must say, I'm actually excited for all three. Anytime that we get these funds to do EWP projects for our city, it's a real win. It really is. Mr. Dollar, does that conclude?
Yes, that concludes my report.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Rutter, Jody Rutter, you're recognized.
Good morning, Mayor and Board.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Seeking approval to install a fire monitoring panel at the convention center. I have two prices for this, one from Sentinel Fire Group for sixty-one thousand six eighty-five, and one from Johnson Controls for fifty-one thousand four hundred and three nineteen.
It was a pleasure of the Board.
So move.
And the motion has been made by Alderman Hall, and it's been seconded by Alderman Davis. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Alderman Hall?
I did speak with Mr. Rutter and with Madam clerk.
Yes.
Now, now doing this work, and it is a necessity, but we cannot be done with the U.P. renovation or restoration of this building. So this is something that we need to do.
Thank you. And the motion, as I understand, is for the low bid, the low quote. Yeah, just making sure, clarify that as the motion. All right, further discussion?
Call for the question?
Question's been called, we'll proceed to a vote, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. Mr. Rutter?
Uh, we're seeking approval to install a compressor in the chiller at Armstrong Library. I have one price from McInville Heating and Air for thirty-two thousand nine thirty-four seventeen, and one from Terry Service for twenty-nine thousand nine seventy twenty-one.
It's a pleasure of the Board. So move. Motion made by Alderman Davis.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Maroney, discussion. We'll call for a question. All. We'll proceed to a vote, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. Mr. Rutter, thank you. I do want to ask the public to please continue being patient. We, we know it's hot, and we know the library's having to close early, but we can help it when these items are on back order and it takes time to get the equipment. But the equipment's on the way, and hopefully within the next two to three weeks. All right, Mr. Rutter, next item?
Seeking approval to install a thirty horsepower variable frequency drive in the air handler. This is also at Armstrong Library. I have one price from McInville Heating and Air for eleven thousand fifteen twenty-one, and one from Terry Service for nine thousand nine fourteen thirty-six.
It's a pleasure of the Board.
I'll make motion for the lowest bid.
Okay, Alderman Smith has made the motion.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Davis. Discussion?
Yes.
Yes, Alderman Fraser?
I think I asked this question, my job, so this chair of service, this, the only, this, like I said.
This is a chiller system, you're not talking about that before. We don't have anybody local that works.
That's what I'm, I'm thinking.
It's not that I'm not buying local, and I have people that change the belts and all that stuff on these, there are things that they can do that are local people. These are things that, I mean, actually, my guy that works on it calls me to call
Yeah, because I was looking at these two bids, I'm like, that's a lot of money that we're spending, people out of town, you know? I was just saying, local people, we could give some of this money to local people, state communities, but I'm just telling you. Matter of fact, I'm looking at three, three bids, this person getting, the next one coming up.
Call for the question?
All right, the question's been called, we'll proceed to a vote, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. I do have to say, I appreciate Alderman Fraser's point, though, because whenever we can, we've been saying this, this whole administration, we need to shop local. Sometimes, unfortunately, it's not possible, but I do appreciate Alderman Fraser's comments. Next, next item?
Seeking approval to install Jace AD controller to control panel to the unit at Natchez Transit.
It was a pleasure of the Board.
So move.
Second motion made by Alderman Hall, seconded by Alderman Smith. Discussion. We'll call for some questions, we'll proceed to a vote, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. All right, thank you, Mr. Rutter, appreciate all you did.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Alderman.
I'd just like to say that I think all of our department heads, whenever we're doing a project, if we can do it locally, we will do it locally.
Yes.
And there are times when we cannot.
That is true.
And the job still has to get done.
That's exactly wrong. No, that's exactly wrong. Thank you. Chief Arrington, recognize you. I got to see this man shine last week. I tell you, that was great. I know you're going to give that report.
I am. So, of course, you all know, a couple of weeks ago, we were able to have the firefighters and fire chiefs conference here in Natchez. We were able to bring in this time, including our vendors, about six hundred people. I know on Thursday and Friday, we gave most of our larger restaurants all that they can handle. We, we filled those places up with firefighters. We had a few challenges during the time, but in true firefighter fashion, we just, we made it work. Storm came through and knocked the power out for us. We, we continued on, thanks, thankful to our great convention center staff, they put on a wonderful show. All of the feedback that I got, everyone is loving Natchez so much that next year, it is going to be in a different location, and they are looking to come back to Natchez in the very near future. So we will be having those conversations about getting another convention here in Natchez in the very near future. According to Chief Pope, who is president of the Firefighters Association, they are looking to do it again, back-to-back. So y'all be ready for that, and I hope our convention center staff is ready as well.
All right.
Thank you for all your.
Oh, let's.
One last thing, all of you all that were able to attend, I hope most of you were, y'all got a chance to see our beautiful new truck there. I know Ms. Hall had a chance to see it.
She got to get in it.
She did, she did. I think she got in it before I did. I don't, I don't know if I like that too much. Oh, I'm glad you all got to see it and, and got to be a part of it and see what we have coming soon, hopefully. I know our city clerk is working hard to get that done. So it is ready for us whenever we are ready for you. So, that's, thank y'all, it is, thank you.
And I also want to say, the men and women of our fire department continue to perform so well, and there was another incident just a few days ago where what could have been really a bad situation, the car, the vehicle that went off the road. Well, the report I got is that it was a scary scene, the firefighters attacked it with zero fear at all, and were heroic in their efforts. Now, that's the report I got. But thank you, Chief, for all that y'all did. Before we go into our city official's report, y'all saw me up here texting, I try to not do that too much when y'all are all voting, but I had to get Malcolm Ennis back here because I did put it under my report, a Juneteenth update, but there's no better person to get this update than the man who's done most of the organizing. And so Malcolm Ennis, New Vision Broadcasting, WTYJ, and, and by the way, I'll be on the radio this evening at five-thirty.
Fantastic.
We just appreciate you.
Well, thank you guys again. We are both feet in for the rest of the week for Juneteenth, we are excited. Friday, we're kind of getting ready, well, Thursday, we have to kick back in Napak here, and then earlier in the day, there'll be the demonstration again with the U.S. colored troops, so that's exciting. I hope you guys are ready. Friday, I hope you're hungry, the cheeseburger challenge is happening. We have about five teams right now with the possible two more that want to be added on, so we're excited there. The concert is pacing very well as far as ticket sales at the auditorium, so that's moving along. On, I met with the NAACP, and so they are excited about the Saturday event over at the concourse quarters. They have about three to four hundred kids that will be in attendance, and they've kind of tied that event in with like a Bible kind of study camp that the different churches are doing, so we're excited there. And we're getting ready for the Sunday event as well. Now, we have had to make a bit of a pivot for Sunday, so we will be hosting the Sunday event over at Pilgrim Missionary Baptist Church. The challenge is that, you know, we just simply weren't getting the calls in, to be frank with you, about the different churches participating. And I think that in having some conversations this week with some of the choir directors, I think what we'll do next year is change the language. I think when we put the competition side of it, because as I'm learning and understanding more of local church politics here, right? Which is a lesson.
Politics.
Oh, man, it is incredible, but, so we're going to pivot and kind of make it more of a showcase type of event.
Right.
The other challenge is that on Sunday, there's the anticipation of inclement weather, and one thing we know, you know, about, you know, the good church folks is that when it rains, they're not coming. So we're going to kind of, you know, again, pivot and migrate things right over to Pilgrim, and we're just going to kind of build on their Father's Day service that they're going to have, and have a special Juneteenth performance with an all-star choir there, and so I think it'll be fantastic. And I've had a chance to speak with Pastor White, so he's all the way on board with it. And the good part, I think, is that, you know, the goal with doing this is we wanted, we didn't want it to be a one-time thing, and so I think this is really what we call proof of performance in a sense, so that people can kind of see and understand the concept, and then we look to build on to it next year. Then next year, of course, we'll add in the fishing competition, or fishing showcase. And so, we're excited.
All right.
What time Sunday with Pilgrim?
Pilgrim, eleven a.m. normal service time, so eleven o'clock, and expect to get out of there maybe about one. And if it's going real good, one-ish. Let's add the ish. One-ish.
Thank you. All right. Well, Mr. Ennis, thanks again for all that you've done.
Thank you, guys, and thank you for the city.
The Buffalo Soldiers Thursday, we're looking forward also, as we said earlier, kick back in Napak here on Thursday night, and our day.
And Unity Day.
On Friday. But I also want to mention, I'm looking forward next Wednesday, the actual day of Juneteenth, looking forward that evening to being able to participate in the luminary service that's being conducted at Melrose.
Melrose.
To honor those enslaved individuals who so sadly, you know, served there so many years ago. While it's a great fun time, I also always want to remind everyone that Juneteenth is also a time to reflect on the fact that this country was not always what it promised it would be. And in some cases, even today, there are areas where we need to improve, but praise God that every day, we're working toward a more perfect union, and we have, here in Natchez, seen so much progress, and this is a time to celebrate that progress.
Absolutely. And look forward to growing together.
Well, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ennis, for all you did. We now have the city official reports. Alderman Hall?
First, I am looking forward to Alderman Davis's fishing with father Saturday that he's been doing for the last three to four years.
Looking forward to that.
Last week, Natchez was well represented at the Mississippi Heritage Trust Awards Ceremony. They had their awards ceremony during their preservation conference, and Natchez had the most winners at this conference, there were four. Bradley May for Oakland, Kathy Stewart and Monty Chapman for Twin Oaks, Tammy and Wes Pack for Holly's Hedges, and the City of Natchez for the North Natchez Youth Center. These were all preservation awards. So we're very proud of what we continue to do with our city's renewal and our preservation. We had an outstanding inaugural season for our youth baseball with our Natchez youth sports, and we're looking forward to the next sporting event for our recreation and for phase two of our recreation renewal. The pool is open, and my understanding, it's very well-attended daily, and swimming lessons have also begun. Just another thing on the pool. I would like to read something from Dr. Daniel Collins at Alcorn. Dr. Daniels Collins has been partnering with Osceola Park Community Garden since its inception, and on June eighteenth and nineteenth, he is having a workshop agriculture, it is a smart workshop, including former students and various A.D., USDA agencies, research and extension faculty from a number of the agricultural land plant universities from Mississippi, Louisiana, and Florida. And he is going to be bringing possibly thirty-seven people to Osceola Park on the eighteenth. His students have been doing research at this park for a number of years now. He is the director of the Plant and Agricultural Department of Alcorn on the Alcorn campus. So he very, he is very proud of what they have done, and he says many of his plant pathology and research interns have presented research papers at national and regional scientific meetings on various plant health management research topics that they conducted at the Osceola Park Garden, which was initially in Ward One, and now we just think is in Ward Six. Congressman, Alderman Maroney. So we're very proud of what the work they have done, and a shout-out has to go out to, a many thanks has to go out to Eddie Burks, Judge George Ward, and Judge James Lao, who till and plant in water at this garden, and who also distributed the produce to the citizens in Natchez, including the senior citizens, senior center. Kelvin King is with the extension at Alcorn State University, and Jason Jones is with the extension of Mississippi State. They have been integral components of this garden also since its inception, and I want to thank James Johnson, too, for his work with this garden. So I want to thank Dr. Collins for being a partner with Osceola Park Community Garden. I'll move on. Yesterday was the conclusion of the Norman Puckett Junior Golf Tournament. This is a Mississippi Golf Association sanctioned event, and the winners of these, of this golf tournament will also receive world golf rankings. There were thirty-seven youth from four states, Mississippi, Alabama, Tennessee, and Texas. The local youth who were going to participate were on vacation, so we did not have anyone from Natchez High School, none of our Natchez youth participated. I would like to congratulate the Natchez. I would like to congratulate the Natchez High School 5A Boys Tennis Champs. They are Kahari McNeil and Jordan Mitchell. I think this is the first time in the history of Natchez High that they've had 5A tennis champs. So I want to congratulate them. I also want to just congratulate, I know he doesn't like a lot of, um, accolades, but Lion Porter and your staff, you deserve a lot of credit, not you, Natchez Youth Sports, and this inaugural baseball season. So we're very proud of you. I know you're a very humble man, you don't like a lot of praise, but you do, you and your staff, your entire staff, you deserve this. And we live and look forward to more sporting events. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, and I've got to give a hand, too, Brian. Anyone who could have seen what I saw out there when I was with you on Monday of last week. Uh, over 300 people. And I actually made the comment at that event, what I love is the diversity, the unity it builds in our community. Because I just saw people of all backgrounds there on a beautiful afternoon, on a beautiful field, just celebrating the achievements of our youth. It was wonderful.
And I do think we had over 300 kids registered for this baseball season. I want to, um, I do have one more. Henry Harris will be conducting, uh, a tennis camp, June and July, at Duncan Park. And you can reach in at 601-597-8070. And also Frankie Spence is also conducting youth tennis and pickleball camps in the summer, June and July. And you can call him at the Tennis Center, 442-1584. And I'll give the name of Dr. Collins's, um, workshop that he's conducting next week. It's the Integrated Pest Management Workshop. And again, it's Saturday, um, June 18th and 19th at the Morning Camp. Thank you.
Alderman Hall, thank you. Good report. Alderman Fraser, you're recognized.
Yes, it's going to be shocking. Uh, first, I just want to, uh, thank the, uh, the board and everyone that was involved. AD, ADI, they start picking up the white goods now. Uh, I noticed this week, they've been going around the different neighborhoods and just picking up refrigerators, uh, stoves, whatever the people's put out now. So that's a big plus for the city of Natchez. And because, uh, as you know, sometimes we have bad weather. People don't have any other way of, uh, getting rid of their goods, like refrigerators or limbs or what. So they're our, our, uh, providers out there now, uh, air disposal out there now doing pickup on, on white, on white goods and stuff. Uh, also, I would like to say, we've been discussing, uh, the project, our project that we've been under. I, I noticed this week that we have the Concord, the EWP project on Concord. They got posted a big sign right off Martin Luther King in, uh, Concord. That project going to be getting underway pretty soon. As I look, as I say, wow, they've got a big old sign up there. So we're moving on, doing what we're supposed to do with these projects, trying to get it there. As you know, we, we do have a lot of erosion within the city of Natchez. And this board is, is working feverishly to address, uh, like I say, especially in my ward. I'm, I'm getting calls every day about hoes coming to people's backyard. But all the thing I want to say, just hold on, we're going to get to you sooner or later. It might take a while. Okay, now, also, and as you notice, uh, everyone here, we had a lot of, we've been having a lot of imping weather, bad weather. And I noticed lately that some, we even, we done did overlay, we've been doing all this, trying to get these streets good. But I noticed lately, some of these streets are starting to buckle. Down Martin Luther King, right there in Martin Luther King, at, at, uh, Minor Street, it's a big bump that starts coming up in the street. Uh, but like I say, I know we gonna have, we, we gonna have these problems. Because when you get this, when you start getting this rain on top of rain, then it's, it's heat on top of heat. I don't care what you're going to do, these streets are going to start buckling. So we don't have a problem this summer in trying to maintain our buckling street. So I just want to simply say, uh, like I say, if you, if you see, you have a problem with your streets or whatever, call us or call y'all, or call, or call City Hall or the mayor and report, uh, or Mr. Dollar, he's down. But just call and report because like I said, it's going to cause some, some damage to, uh, uh, some of the vehicles. Also, I noticed that, uh, there's been a lot of, uh, construction going on in the city. So I, I, I guess that, uh, building permits are going up and we are moving right on with a lot of construction. I noticed out by the, uh, out by the auto place, by the reception, they say, is that a big car wash they building that? So, and it's like, we're moving on, we're doing the best we can. Like I said, only thing I can say to the system, just hold on, it's another year. We're going to do what the hell we can and the best we can for ourselves.
Uh, thank you. Alderman Fraser, um, thank you for all this progress and noting it, um, for ADSI picking up that trash. I remember while that, we were talking about if only the city could afford a new limb truck. Well, the city's got a new limb truck.
Exactly.
But we're not having operated. And it is, our paid for. Well, we're paid for it through the garbage rate. I will say this, it's a great new service. And, and it, it was real, uh, sight to my ears. I think I may have been the very first person to put things out, clean up my yard in the Monday morning a week ago, looking out and seeing this shiny new truck. And they were moving it really slow. I could tell they're learning it as they go.
Right.
Mr. Mayor, I think we posted, have we posted the pickup date for that?
We have, we run in the paper, we run on social media. I included in a column and an e-blast, but we can certainly continue. And it went out with the water bills.
Yes, and those water bills are still going out.
Okay.
Yeah, I know.
We can continue sharing.
And we also have hard copies available as soon as we hurry one.
There's some in the city all right now, there in the fore.
And Mr. Mayor, we also read the ad on TV, too. April 16th, um, Jackson News, WJTV advertised for us. The, um, ad pertaining to the changes we've made with our city.
Yes, I did that. Good. I, I missed that.
Yes. So many WJTV views.
Uh, well, uh, WJTV is our friend, I tell you what. Alderman Smith, your report.
Uh, thank you. I do want to just piggyback on the, the pickup for the goods. Um, it is, it has to be up that Monday. I think there's been confusion, I've had some calls on that. Um, not on the day of your garbage, you have to have it Monday because they don't know what day of the week they're going, going to get by there. So please have it out Monday morning or Sunday night.
Depending on what's your.
Or what was the other?
Well, basically, if they pick you up, if they pick you up on Mondays, have it out there on Monday. If they pick you up on Tuesdays, you're the following week, but you still have to out, have it out on Monday. But it swaps, Monday, Thursdays get picked up one week. Next week is the, you know, Tuesdays, Fridays. Next week is back Monday, Thursday. It's a little confusing, but I think people will.
They'll get it eventually.
They'll get it.
Okay, and then just the only other thing I want to mention is there is that Neighborhood Watch meeting at Parkway Baptist Church. So I know a lot of people from Ward 3 and Ward 6 will, will be there. It's at 6 o'clock. That's it.
Okay. Thank you so much, Alderman. Alderman Irving?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Um, I want to begin with, um, congratulating all the graduates of the class of 2024. Congratulations on their, their endeavors in high school and their new chapter that they're approaching, um, whether they go to college, whether they go into the workforce, whether they go to military, whatever we, whatever they choose to do. I wish them all success. So again, congratulations to all the class, graduates of the class of 2024. I also want to, um, offer my condolences to the family of Mr. Mark LaFrancis. Um, I met Mr. LaFrancis many, many years ago at Colleen, um, Copile Lincoln Community College here on the Natchez campus. Um, he was an impeccable instructor of what, um, caught my attention and always have caught my attention with him, was his willingness to always help others. No matter what the situation was, he was willing to help others and always with a smile. So my, um, condolences go to his, um, wife and family and, um, ask that we all keep them in his, their presence at this time. Um, I also want to ask, we are entering the time of the year where we establish a budget for the fiscal year, '24, '25, which begins in October, October 1. And I want to bring to, um, the mayor and, well, to the Alderman, that we have, um, work sessions. And my reason for asking for the work session is because, um, I spoke with Mr. Dollar, and I'm sure our police chief and our fire chief, all the other department directors could adhere to this, um, so that we can meet the wants and the needs of their, um, of their department to function effectively. And what I mean by that, use for example, our public works department. Mr. Dollar and I have had long discussion, long limited discussion on the operation of the public works. Last month, there were five people hired. By the end of the month, they were all, they all resigned. And they resigned due to the lack of pay. They said they cannot provide for their family with the pay that they're being paid. So I would like for us, um, the mayor and board, and it's my true concern that with the lack of workforce, all the services that are provided by our public works department will not at some point be provided. So I would like us to seriously take a look at the budget. Because if wages is the issue that they are expressing and we can't keep or retain them, um, then we need to take a serious look at our, um, budget for this year. I know it happens, I see repetitiously on our hiring fire sheet, we hired two officers to resign. So we're still where we're at. Um, fire is just being repetitive. So I'm asking this board for us to have these workshops so that we can be more transparent and let our public know this is the need that we have in our, um, city in order to provide the services effectively to the citizens of Natchez. More finances are going to have to be increased. Also, um, and I will make a motion with that, but I know our city clerk is hearing me and hopefully she would take that unadvisedly to, um, to do that. Um, some of the services that we're lacking now, sweeper truck, no one is there to drive our sweeper truck at this point. The mosquito truck, we don't have anyone that goes out and provide those services now. So I'm just wanting to bring this to our attention, that we definitely need to look at, um, funding for, um, our citizens, I, I mean, for the public work employees so that they can provide the services that are needed. Um, also.
I do wish Mr. Dollar was here, because some of these services, they're having to substitute, but they are getting done. And I, I don't want the public to think that we aren't taking care of the basic services. Because we are, it is, it has been a challenge. But I do want to make sure the public knows the services are being, they are being met.
They are, we have small approvals, though. And what I'm saying is that we need to provide the finances so that we can do what? Attract those employees to staff.
We have given, uh, three raises each year.
We have.
And I am very open to giving another, uh, when we get into the budget process.
That's all I'm asking. That's all I'm asking. Okay, um, I also, Mr. Mayor, I attended Mr. Freeman Reason's 80th Birthday Celebration. And there I presented him a certificate of appreciation on behalf of the mayor and board of Alderman. Um, the celebration went really well. There were, um, visitors from out of the state of Mississippi that attended. Um, it was well received and he enjoyed that 80th birthday. Um, and they also sent back word to say thank you to the mayor and board of Alderman for that, um, certificate of appreciation. Um, the Concord Drainage Project, it will start soon. That project will begin with North Concord Street to the LaSalle Street. Um, I also wanted to share, because a lot of the, um, residents in that area have been inquiring about the street, LaSalle Street, and the potholes that need to be filled. They will be taken care of with the improvements that are made to LaSalle Street. That's why there's a delay there, um, so that that will be taken care of at that time. I also ask that members of that community, please be patient. Because when change come about, we are inconvenienced somewhat. But we know the outcome is what we're looking at, that you will have a street that's wider, uh, more accessible for, um, you all to mobilize in that area. Um, and that is my report, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Alderman.
Mm-hmm.
Good report.
Thank you.
Alderman Davis?
I'll make sure this week, uh, last week I attended the career fair with, with the Workforce Development Director, Tawana Wade. Her staff put on, it's a great, uh, it was a great, uh, fair. Had 35 employers and over 200, 40 people attended at, uh, that, uh, the fair. And, uh, had a lot of positive feedback from the community. People asked when, uh, when is this next one? It's, uh, a lot of companies from the surrounding area attended that, uh, that career fair. And, uh, my official with the policy event will be this weekend. And, uh, so far, Mr. Porter said, uh, 75 people, uh, signed up, which is going to be more than that because, uh, some of, some people are, were not signed up, they don't have to. It's just, all I want them just to show up for this event. Uh, they're, they're gonna, the Natchez Trains are gonna take them, uh, from the, uh, pick them up from the National Guard Armory at 7:30. Take them out there, the event starts at 8 o'clock, it should end about 1:00. They, they won't have to worry about no food. We have reels, some to drink and everything there. So all you got to do is bring your body and you will enjoy yourself there. The reason why I did this third year, the reason why I do this, because it's a lot of, uh, kids within, uh, see the Natchez. They never, uh, some of them never left Natchez. Never, they never went to the State Park, nothing like that. They have no idea about the State Park. That's the rea, one of the reasons why I did not started doing this. I wanted to give them some of that, you know, some mental prepare out there. Because, uh, fishing wildlife, they're gonna be there. There's some police, a fire, fire, they'll be there. I just want, uh, kids to enjoy themselves, uh, this weekend. That's, that's in my report.
Alderman Davis, also, uh, we all didn't really have anything to worry about Tuesday last week. You really didn't either, but you did make it official and you had quite an impressive victory last Tuesday. And so congratulations to you. And, um, looking forward to the next four years, we all are. Alderman Maroney?
Uh, not much to report, uh, I do. It, it looks as though all the striping is finished, I think, on all our newly paved city streets, including that speed bump, which you had, you had asked about in our last meeting. All that's been, all that's been.
Yes, yes.
Lighter note, the Natchez Bicycle Classic was this past weekend. It was a big success, uh, rave reviews from all the participants. So we hope that, uh, hope that will, will continue, will put it together again next year, bring in even more people. So, uh, but again, not a whole lot to report, so that's it for me.
Thank you, Alderman Maroney. Thank you. We'll now recognize the city clerk, Madam Clerk.
Um, first item, I have a request for approval of the first June 2024 Plank Stopet.
It's a pleasure, the board.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Hall, seconded by Alderman Davis. We'll call for a question. Or do we have any discussions?
Um, I was. Um, any discussion?
No, I would just like to say I did, um, call Madam Clerk about a question that she gave.
Okay, all right. And, um, did you have any, Alderman?
Pleasure. Um, I did, but it's really been answered. And it was actually referred to the state and unitary that was answered with the discussion that we just had this morning.
All right, call for the question. All in favor of the motion?
Uh.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, go ahead.
Madam Clerk, I have a request for approval of the first June 2024 Mini Plank Stopet. And, um, Alderman Hall did point out that she called a question that was actually returning to the Mini Plank Stopet. Uh, the second to last item that you see there, check number 21514016. Um, the payee was incorrect on the form that was sent out to you all. The correction would be that the payee was Lakeisha Rogers, and this was travel per diem. And this was travel per diem, um that was approved from.
Can you repeat that? Because I didn't hear.
The question, well, the the comment that Alderman Hall made um about calling in about a question actually referred to the mini claim stop. The second to last item on the mini claim stop, check two-one-five-one-four-zero-two, I'm sorry, zero-one-six. Um I believe on the form that was sent out was the Mississippi Department of Revenue Title Bureau. That was incorrect. The payee was actually Lakeisha Rogers, and this was indeed travel per diem um that was approved by the board.
So we need a motion to approve the mini claim stop.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, further discussion on this? Call for the question?
Call.
Um all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All opposed? Uh motion passes.
Thank you. Uh next item is request for approval of the payroll transfers.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Alderman Davis seconded. Uh is there any discussion on the personnel report? I mean payroll transfer, sorry.
Call the question.
All right, my question's been called. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Continue.
Next item is request for approval of the May twenty-two four personnel report.
So moved.
Uh that would be um Alderman Davis made the motion and Alderman Hall seconded. Any discussion on the motion?
Call the question.
Question has been called. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, uh my final item is request for approval of travel for myself and Ms. Carolyn Deason. Again, the labor and employment law workshop, which is provided annually by Phelps Dunbar. This is a free workshop for anyone attending, um therefore no registration, but there would be um you know, travel expense with hotel and mileage and stuff.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Hall, seconded by Alderman Davis. Discussion. We'll call for the question. Call. We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, madam. The ayes have it, motion carries. Madam Clerk, I think it'd be nice if we could also today discuss the attendance of the upcoming ML Health Summer Conference, which will begin on um Sunday, the twenty-
Twenty-third through the twenty-sixth.
We have one more meeting.
Um uh we are having a meeting next week on the eighteenth. We've already moved that up, but I don't know that we've approved travel.
No, we have not. We have not.
And I need to get a poll of those who are attending today. Are all of the older persons attending?
I am.
Is anyone not attending? Okay, I think everyone is, the city clerk. Or do we have others? I I mean, you know, we do invite our department. Police chief, fire, police chief is going, fire chief is going. Um we uh we we can accommodate. There is information on Parks and Recreation and on Public Works at this meeting. Um if, you know, uh Ms. Porter, you wanted to get um it would be ne, uh get with the-
June twenty-third through the-
You would need to get with the city clerk. I know they're a little late to get you registered.
They never been, Mr. Mayor.
They haven't.
Not, any time I've been in Park Beck.
I know some cities bring theirs.
They never been. We, 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 they can't, they never been.
I I would like to add my chief deputy clerk and also deputy clerk Rebecca Turner and Ruth Denise Bell.
Why don't we work on that and then get a final approval at the next meeting?
Mr. Mayor, every meeting I've attended since I've been in office, there is a workshop on recreation. Recreation directors are there and-
And public works.
On public works.
And they are, and they should be able to attend.
That is true.
They should be able to attend.
That is true.
They're the directors.
Well, I will say, there is more education happening and it it it's it's really valuable. You can learn about grants.
Absolutely.
You can learn about all sorts of things that are possibly challenges here and and have been already resolved elsewhere, but we wouldn't know unless we were there. Hear the conversation.
That's why we're there.
And that's why we're there as Alderman and as mayor, but we can't go to all of the sessions.
It's very expensive.
But it is expensive. So we'll have those discussions. We'll come back at our next meeting, but we do need to get that approved by next Tuesday.
I would just like to say, for instance, the public works um meetings, I always attend those. And when I was there, our dump truck was there on display. Our sweeper was there on display next, that already purchased. And so you learn these things and you learn about, everybody's having the same issues, even with employees. And so all that information is shared, but best practices are often shared. And so how do you learn them and bring them back here? This is by going and learning, so.
We'll uh, we'll then take this up. I wanted to bring this up today because we're only a couple of weeks out. We need to make sure we have all of that planned. All right? All right. Madam Clerk, I think that concludes then your report. And I think Mayor Protem will briefly fill in for me. City attorney, we'll now recognize you, Mr. Lazarus.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Board of Alderman, we, Mr. Walter Brown is here and Mr. Walter Tipton is also here. And we have hammered out an agreement for the approval of the north end of the depot management contract. And we're asking the board's pleasure as to whether or not to approve the contract.
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Hall, seconded by Alderman Maroni. Uh we'll have discussion and uh, Mr. Lazarus, I want to just go ahead and jump in. Because I know, I know there is a part of this that I want everyone to fully understand. So the city, as you know, uh conducted an RFP and that RFP had only one uh respondent. And then the city uh through negotiations with that one uh entity uh came forth with a recommendation that this board approved just a few weeks ago. Uh the entity happens to be the same company that is currently managing, operating the convention center. And so the north end of the depot will now be additional convention space. And it will offer great views, a great opportunity to have events right there on the river. Also, a great location being that public restrooms are there already now and our new visitor center is there. Now, the company is planning to invest a hundred and fifty thousand on this construction of their money. And obviously, we can't anticipate the private company would invest that kind of money without some guarantee that they can operate it for a length of time. Uh we have been going over this, deemed it appropriate to merge this with the current convention center in all those operations, but we have also negotiated that the rate that is paid by the city for the management of the convention center will remain unchanged back to its amount that was agreed upon in twenty-seventeen. That is, I think, tremendous, being that we are in a post-COVID environment and everything has been going up. And the fact that the company has agreed and uh to keep those rates the same is really saying something. We also have had an opportunity to look at the financials for the company, uh New Orleans Consultant um Hotel Group. We've looked at those financials and it is apparent that the, while the city's cost under that contract has been fixed since twenty-seventeen, the contractor's costs have steadily gone up. And in fact, the vast majority of the expenditures necessary to run the convention center are borne by that consulting company and not by the city. We are very grateful also that under the arrangement set forth twenty years ago, when the convention center was first begun, the city enjoys good revenue that is earmarked for that convention center. That is what's allowing us now to undergo renovations, not only to the convention center, but the civic center and also the auditorium, a six billion dollar project, while in the same process paying off the convention center. These are indeed good times for Natchez. We also have researched other convention centers. And as recently as yesterday, Alderman Smith, if you wanted to add?
I will add that.
Alderman Smith, I'll recognize you for that part of the discussion.
The reason it's, I'm adding is because I did ask to wait until this meeting to do this, and it's because I believe it's our responsibility to do our due diligence. And I want to thank Richard Burks. He did a lot of work on it and he and I did some work together on it as well. And it we, it is a very competitive um contract and it's it's a good contract and I I believe in what we're doing and what y'all are doing. And I just wanted to make sure that that it was competitive and that we did our what our job is for our taxpayers to do our due diligence. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Smith. I thank you for making sure we did our homework. And we actually uh looked at several convention centers around the state. And I don't really want them to hear this um before we vote, but um city of Natchez, we're getting a good deal. I want to also say that there are those who have suggested they could do it cheaper. And we've looked into that and we have found that these are companies with very little experience have not, we we have one that has not even asked to even look at financials, just throwing a figure out there blindly. We can't take those kind of chances with the management of an asset as important to the city as the convention center is. We are hopeful that the management company, understanding they're still being paid what they were in twenty-seventeen, will be able to make up some of the difference by increased revenue from the north end of the depot. It's gonna be a great venue for them. So- Yes, Alderman-
I do want to thank Mr. Tipton. They got a great team there and they work hard and and it's very much appreciated, so I want to add that.
Alderman Fraser?
Yes. Um, this is a lease agreement. Is this, is this uh, Mr. Tipton, is this water? It's the same, is this the same management company?
Yes, it is, it is. Mr. Tipton, you are, is on the agenda and you represent the company if you, and also Mr. Walter Brown is here. Uh Mr. Tipton, if you'd like to answer Alderman Fraser's question.
Absolutely, this is the same company?
Yes.
The same uh-
Mr. Tipton, can you use the mic, please?
This is the same company. This is the same uh business model that we established in uh two thousand and seven. But the convention center has been successful uh from the, from the beginning because we have a good model and also because we have an adjacent hotel uh that operates with the convention center.
My my concern, might not be my concern, is that this, and I love, I love you and and Mr. Blue too, but uh this my first term in office, I think uh we had to sell with y'all for seventy-five thousand to get out that building.
You're referring to the depot project that was begun under Butch Brown's administration, yeah?
No, 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 I don't wish that, on the man, there, Brinell.
I'm so sorry, I had that misunderstood.
We, we had to, we had to pay a seller for him to to, for the, for this same company to get out that building. That's my only concern. Now, I say this to you and the public. I don't have a problem with you, Mr. Blue, but I have to let the public know what is going on in this contract. What, what you trying, like I said, y'all are a good company, but I just want to let them know that we have dealt with y'all before and we had to pay a little seller to get out this agreement. And now you want to have another agreement with us? So I just want people to know what's going on.
So, so-
We ain't trying to backslide on nobody, you know, trying to put some money in.
But that's not, this is the circumstances in the first uh uh thing that you're talking about. We actually wanted to go in and renovate the entire depot. And that was a, that was a, that was like a two-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-dollar agreement. And we were in the process of doing that when the city, the city council decided that they wanted to put that project out for bids to let other people come in and have an opportunity for that building. I think I'm characterizing that right. So the only thing that we were paid was to reimburse us for the progress that we had made up to that point. Uh it was, it was purely just compensation for the demolition that we had already engaged and had done in the building. Uh so there was no, there was no hard feelings or uh there was no profit uh to our company uh for being involved in it the first time. And all we're doing here is re-establishing the fact that we continue to feel like the depot would be a great addition to the convention center offerings that we can use to support. And I I certainly want everybody to understand that one of the reasons why we see this as an opportunity is that we compete against, and you're familiar with uh the Hattiesburg Lake Terrace Conference Center. They have a terrace that leads into the lake. We compete against the Boeravage that has this big pool that overlooks the Gulf. And we compete against Flowood now that has a swimming pool in the lazy river right adjacent to their conference center. Those are, those are heads-up competition. What we're gonna be able to offer is a bluff park that we're gonna have a nexus to operate from. And we have meetings that are very creative and they want to do things in that adjacent space, like M-Dot had a tethered balloon ride for one of their conferences. That was a huge success. They haven't forgotten that. Every time they come to Natchez, they love that idea. We have the Rotary Club that comes with a, with a two-state conference every spring. This year, we had an axe throw and we had to move that inside at the civic center. But being out and being at the bluff park gives us a a footprint that we can do those kind of things. We have SWANA, the Solid Waste Association. They want to do fish fries. And you know, a fish fry and you start doing shrimp and crawfish and things like that. That's much more conducive when you're doing it in a park setting outside. So there are a lot of things that we see that that will enable us to complement our convention services for. Does that help address that?
Yes, I just want to uh thank you because you uh, you were in more detail explaining to us, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Hall?
Uh I would like to say I'm looking forward to continuing to work with Mr. Brown and his clients and with Mr. Tipton because I think we now have both ends of our depot in operation. And that's something that we needed for a very, very long time. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Comfortable question?
The question has been called and this is a motion. I don't, I want everyone, we had a typo in the earlier agenda. It's not a lease. This is a management contract agreement. And it's a continuation of the terms that were set into place in twenty-seventeen with regard to the convention center. This now extends it. It's a five-year term with a five-year option.
That's correct.
Um, we'll now entertain a vote. The question's been called. Uh we'll call for those who are in favor. Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Appears to be unanimous. Motion carries. Thank you so much. We do appreciate all that you did, uh Mr. Tipton and Mr. Brown. Good seeing you. And again, wow, we've had some great conferences. We've got a lot more uh this week next. A good time.
Uh yeah. Mr. Brown? Mr. Brown?
Mr. Brown?
Could you uh stick around just for a few minutes? Because I have some questions on this next, this coming up. I just want to ask you something. I just want to ask you something. So on this next on this coming up next on the, uh, on the, uh, 2024 agreement regarding the raising of Silver Street Hill, I need to ask you some questions.
The the raising of Silver Street?
Yes.
Oh, this is a Silver Street update. That's not no longer under the city attorney's report.
Okay.
And Mr. Brown has not been involved in that.
So we are not discussing the contract. We have a contract here.
No, sir. There is an amended agenda that you should have got.
Okay. Well, I I got two or three.
I'm so sorry. Here, we, uh, do we have another?
I got two or three. They got two or three of them.
I'm sorry for that confusion. Mr. Brown, um.
Just one minute, Mr. Brown.
Make sure.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay.
I will give you an update.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Means welcome. Um, so we now are to the next item, Mr. Attorney, on your report.
We have prepared a cooperation agreement with Energy for the Gordon Lane Erosion Project. Uh, that agreement, uh, has been modified by Energy and we now have it in final form. We're asking the pleasure of the board to seek an approval for the cooperation agreement with Energy.
So motion made by Alderman Davis, second. Same deal by Alderman Maroni. Discussion. We'll call for questions. Proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries.
That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Lazarus. Uh, we've already have our had our Juneteenth update. Uh, the WJTV hometown this Friday. I am excited to announce that WJTV considered Natchez to be their most successful hometown experience last year. So they are again rolling out their summer hometown series where they bring newscasts live from various cities. They're rolling that out again, premiering it here in Natchez. We really need the help of the public. Uh, they are going to be very likely at our Day of Unity program that will be right here at Maybach. That's at 12 noon. But they also are going to be at the Bandstand on the Bluff at 4:00 and at 4:30. Around 4:30, they're then going to the Proud to Take the Sand Monument, uh, because we've encouraged them, being that this goes into our Juneteenth, uh, celebrations, that that would be a fantastic site to give a feature. Uh, they also will be in other places. The main thing being a crowd needed again at 6 o'clock at the New Visitor Center where they're going to have a Natchez food segment. Should be a lot of fun. So I would say that the main places where we need a crowd are on the Bluff, at the Bandstand, 4:00, 4:30, and at the Visitor Center at 6:00. So please spread the word. We are actually putting some things out in the media, already have. Uh, Visit Natchez is working very hard to make this another great event for WJTV. And, uh, we're just grateful that they've chosen Natchez. Alderman Maroni?
When you say Visitor Center at 6?
Yes. That is our new Visitor Center at the depot. And they are having a they are featuring food from some local restaurants, a food segment there at the depot. And they want a crowd. And then they are going to have some enthusiastic shout-outs from the Bandstand. What a great place. We've got to make sure by Friday that we have some fans. We promised them fans would be installed in the Bandstand because while it's a beautiful backdrop, it's probably going to be hot. Um, and so, uh, Mr. Burke, if you would, help me make sure that gets done. Don't need to drop the ball on that.
On that note, I do want to mention Ken South there, Weatherman is from Natchez too.
Yes.
Yeah.
And he will be here.
He'll be here. He's always here and and loves being back in Natchez and it's good support for him too.
And Ken South will be here and also Walt Grayson, who might as well be from here.
Yeah.
Um, Walt is going to be here. Walt was here just a couple days ago at the cemetery, I'm told. Uh, so that's going to be a great, great event. Also, I do want to mention this, on Friday, I don't want people to forget, we have this great event, Cheeseburger Cookoff, the Day of Unity. We have a concert at the Auditorium at 8:00. But we also have a retirement party for Miss Spring Harley that evening. And I believe this from 6:00. Is it right, 6 to 8? Yeah. And it's this Friday. And I wanted to make sure everyone remembered. And that's going to be held at the Natchez, where is it? At the Senior Center. Just want to make sure everyone knows. All right. I want to now announce the details for our inauguration. Our inauguration. It's exciting. Uh, new term begins on July 1st. We should all know how to do this because we've been through it, some more than others. And so the ceremony will be taking place this year. The charter allows us to designate, you know, the times and places. This year, we have decided to have that ceremony at 12 noon at the Natchez Convention Center. All right, we're going to have it inside. Uh, so we'll have that ceremony at 12 noon. Uh, we will have swearing in of the Alderman, the mayor, the judge, and, uh, more details, you know, to follow. We then will be having a special called board meeting, our first board meeting of the new term, at 3:00 PM that afternoon in the city council chamber. That allows every time for everybody to get the pictures, have lunch, and enjoy being inaugurated. We'll have that first meeting at 3:00 PM. And then also, I want you to just be sure to put this on your calendar. We're having a free inaugural gala for our community at Rolling River Reloaded, featuring Wazee Delee. The elected officials will be honored at that event. And there will be, uh, free, uh, appetizers and soft drinks and beverages, a cash bar for those who want anything more. Uh, and I am actually paying for that through my fund, not the city. Actually, uh, that will be sponsored by the Dandam Gives Them campaign as a thank you to the city. That allows us to legally have it because the city can't pay for it. And but I want you to know that it is to honor all of us. And I am hopeful that all of you will be there with us as we celebrate this gala and recognize all of you because this is our inauguration.
What time?
That will be from 6 to 8 on that evening. All of this is on Monday, July 1st. And, uh, thank you, Mr. Tipton, for hosting us at the convention center in the AC. I wanted to go back to the Bandstand and I had prepared a 30-minute, uh, inaugural address with another 20 minutes of thank yous. But, uh, now may I remind you, my shortest speech was the first one when we were there. It was 10 minutes, but we don't want to do that again. It was hot. All right. Uh, so so now you know. Looking forward to inauguration day. Um, I will also now share a few details. Live at 5:00 on the 4th was a great success last year. And we are very grateful to Sherri Lindsay Law Hall for sponsoring this and putting it all together. The city did help. She had other sponsors. And we had, I think, a thousand people out on the Bluff. And the fireworks were the grand finale. Uh, we will do this again. We will have live music. We have a diverse program that should meet all of the desires of all of our citizens, young, old, regardless of demographic. And what I'm really excited is during the intermission, um, probably around, I'd say, 6:30 or so, we are going to recognize our Special Olympic Athletes from Natchez Adams County. There are a lot of them. And it's going to be real exciting to have that recognition for them. Uh, dress code with shorts, flip flops, and casual, um, BYOB. But, um, I see Mr. Porter laughing. It's also going to be a fun time for the kids. The Department of Parks and Recreation, again, will be setting up some great games and events on the Bluff. And, uh, we're we're working hard already and making a great, a great time. So there you there you go. Look forward to that. Brief update, you've already approved some of it with our NOLA grant, uh, program. But, uh, our NOLA camera grant, but May was Prime Camera Participation Month. It was a great success. We got a lot of requests. It looks like we've been able to honor, oh, changes about all of them, Chief, right? And the list has, uh, has been worked now through the consultant. The company has been engaged and about 50 new cameras are going up this summer. So, good news. We're not going to tell you where they are. But just watch out. Things are getting better. And in addition to that, Energy is progressing with their effort to replace all the remaining streetlights with, uh, with LED. So lighting improvements are on the way. And I also understand that we have new radars. And I know this because people have been telling me they're getting tickets. No, that's why we have radars. Our police do, when they can, they do give warnings. But let me just tell you, this time slowed down. And I am enjoying seeing the heightened police presence. Uh, I was I was going down, uh, 61 South, uh, just the other day and thought, ooh, I'd better watch out. Yeah, I don't want to get pulled over in the mayor's car. That'd be embarrassing. But in all seriousness, mind the speed limits because these new radars are really nice. They're really fancy. And I know the officer's fingers are just burning to use them.
They are.
And and some of these increased activities are due to an old-fashioned police grant that the police department received back in the late part of 2023. Alderman Smith?
Can remind people they're also looking at littering for littering. When they're standing there on the side, or I mean, when they're doing radar, they're going to look for that as well.
They are.
Yeah. It's a steep fine. And if it blows out of the back of your truck, that's littering.
First offense, $500. Yes, Alderman Hall?
I need to interject here at this point.
Yes.
Um, Chief, I want to ask you about already asked some of your commanders and your shift supervisors to increase patrol in some areas because there is a grave disregard for one-way streets. People are using these one-way streets as two-way streets. And they're also continually to go through stop signs and lights, which is going to cause increased wrecks or fatalities. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, we also want to thank citizens for their help in solving crimes, reminding everyone that Crime Stoppers is there. Uh, report any suspicious activity, your identity is kept, uh, secret. And if whatever you share results in a conviction, you will receive a cash award. And in some cases, these cash awards are very high. Also, we want to just encourage our our citizens, uh, if you're dealing with crime, don't try to solve it yourself or try to solve it using Facebook. Um, call our police officers, our police chief, our department. And if you can't get them, call me. But it is our desire to keep this city safe. And overall trends indicate that we're doing just that. Our numbers are going in the right direction and we're very grateful for that. Last, but certainly not least, and I understand we are going to have a brief executive session today, but last, certainly not least, I do have a Silver Street update. We had hoped that we might be able to approve agreement on Silver Street at this meeting. However, we still don't have an agreement with, uh, property owners under the Bluff. We've been working this for about three years. Uh, and it's come to a point where we're about to run out of the time we have to properly bid the project. Uh, because a portion of these funds are DEQ funds, $1 million matched with our ARPA funds, and they have to be obligated by August. So we're rapidly running out of time. We've known this. We have we have given warnings that, you know, hey, we're going to run out of time. And the city can't risk just letting the clock run out and then having to send the $1 million back. So while we are still working with the property owners for resolution, uh, and there is one last, you know, item, that is a financial item that remains to be resolved, um, we are going to have to begin looking at alternatives for that $1 million in DEQ money. You can only go to drainage projects. It has to be matched by ARPA funds. And I don't want to lose it. You don't want to work that hard to get it and then have to send it back. Uh, Mr. Johnson's been invaluable in helping us with some advice dealing with these funds. We hope to have more information for you soon. I will say, if we don't do the Silver Street project right now, it's not a total loss. The plans are done. The plans have been done. It is a shelf-ready project. It will just mean that it may have to come at another time. Because the city has to keep very close to the budget we have, not only for this project but for other projects. And we are now about to take on what could be an $800,000 repair of the Camals Street Bridge, just saying. And we have not raised taxes during this administration, and it is in our our intention not to do that, not in the next term. So we're being very careful on this issue. And that's all I can say to this.
If I may.
Alderman Irving?
Yes, I want to make this announcement here.
Oh, certainly. Before I do, any questions for me? Okay. Uh, Mr. Lazarus, did I sum those up accurately?
Yes, I would thank Brian Callaway for his assistance with that as well.
Yes, of course. Thank you so much. Uh, Alderman Irving, yes?
Thank you, Mayor. I failed to mention this in my report, but, um, it's Ward for, um, St. Catherine Street Neighborhood Watch Meeting. Um, it's going to be held at Murray Temple Church of God in Christ, 5 Perrault Street, Wednesday, June 12th at 6:00 PM. Um, guest speaker will be represented from the Natchez Police Department. I'm just inviting all those members of Ward for and around the city to please come out to this meeting.
And again, that's Murray Temple and what is that?
5 Perrault Street.
What what is that, uh, date?
June 12th at 6:00 PM.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, at this time, we have an executive session matter that we're going to have to have a close determination on. The camera can continue to roll until we come back and make an announcement. That's wrong. I'm explaining that right now. We're going to have to have a motion to go into close determination. And this is pertaining to, uh, Madam Fleer, is this a, uh?
Subpersonnel.
A personnel matter?
But actually, potential litigation.
Um, so, uh, a matter of both. Okay. So we're going to have a close determination and we will come back. I'll entertain the motion to go into close determination at this time for that reason. Motion made by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman, oh, um, Alderman Maroni made that motion, made that second. Any discussion? The question's been called. We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries. We will be back shortly with a report. And at that time, uh, if we do go into executive session, the live feed will end, but it'll continue for right now. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.